You have enough tests, so you can keep testing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, we were just down in the land of Massachusetts, and so we're gonna be watching ourselves pretty carefully. Have Sean here and Rich Brown, you might go with them, and Dan.
What?
Have a seat.
Well, I'm still pacing to nine o'clock.
We have John Bigelow on Zoom also.
Okay. We've got just a couple of minutes to wait, then we will proceed.
And they don't have to pass them over.
And now we have just a minute, and we're also waiting for David. Should be swinging in here any minute now.
So Judy, is the note on the board there true now? Excellent.
It is. Seven pounds, two ounces, true. Mom's doing good.
Excellent.
Dad's doing great, Ben's doing great.
Yeah. Oh, that's terrific.
I know. It's very exciting. Now he has somebody named Kevin Islett.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I know who's saying that wrong, sorry.
Good morning.
Well. No.
Well, if you can, you can count Ben, but you can't, um, count him as part of your official meeting or, um...
Okay, so can't open them, is the only point. So we're just waiting, Ben is joining us by Zoom, we're just waiting for David to physically be here. So I apologize for that. We're gonna have to start giving him fifteen-minute times that are different than the actual start times.
Eight thirty. That's what I used to do with my son. Half an hour ahead, he'd still be fifteen minutes late. Better than forty-five.
Yes, yes. I think David just drove in, so it shouldn't be very long now.
No, as a matter of fact, I'll just send him a guy another email.
What did you say? Should we look at?
What was that?
Oh, very?
Yeah. Hey, it's him.
Oh.
Well, he'll get my email when he gets in here.
Oops.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Ten, yeah, like that. You have yourself. She must be doing.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you.
Sorry to be all the way.
That's okay. David is up. Ben is joining us by Zoom. It is now, I'm gonna open the meeting, nine oh five. And we have a few people on Zoom, and we have a few people in the room. And I will open the public comments up to those in the room first, and then we'll move to the ones on Zoom. And at nine fifteen, or a bit earlier, we will entertain Michael Whitman. So, Dan?
You're getting used to me going first.
Yes.
Yeah, just to clear up a few loose ends here. So when we talked about my abatement on July fourteenth, um, you instructed that my statement be put in the minutes, and it's not there.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that happened. Yeah, just to clarify my state, I wanna be sure my statement's there.
Attached to the minutes, July fourteenth, okay, so July.
And you said you'd get back to me regarding RSA seventy-six sixteen?
Wait, hold on.
Do we have a copy of the statement?
I think you sent it via email.
I sent it to you, and you acknowledged receiving it.
Well, that was good of me, wasn't it? I don't remember that. Okay, I'll look.
You did. You thanked me right away.
Oh, good. Thanks.
So if you need, Dina, do you need it? Would you let me to send it again?
No, I can, no, I can come email.
I can, I would be happy to send it again.
Why didn't you?
Okay.
I'll find it later, and if you don't get an email, I will acknowledge you and say I've got it and it's going on.
That would be very good. That is what I call completing his circle.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for keeping us.
Right. Yeah, no, I would like that to be there. And then you said you'd get back to me regarding RSA seventy-six sixteen and the select board's ability to change their opinion on the abatement.
Okay.
Which the RSA doesn't talk about, so I wanted to just open that back up and...
Okay, I don't believe that we have talked to council about that yet.
You're talking to your lawyer about that, that's the plan.
Well, I would think that would be the plan, otherwise it's just individuals deciding how they think they read the RSA, so...
I mean, the RSA doesn't say anything about selectors at all, so it only talks about residents.
I, one, select board member would be more comfortable with local council giving him a opinion.
Yeah, no, I understand. No problem.
It's not something I do every day.
Right. Okay, that's me.
Okay. So... Okay. And we have Amy. Did you wish no public comment?
No, I just appear because I think government in general performs much better if people are watching, so...
Okay. I think behind that mask is Bob Thibodeau.
Yes.
Grandpa, new grandpa.
His grandfather.
Oh, Roger was born?
Yeah.
Yep.
Congratulations.
One of the most beautiful people I have ever met in my life.
How could it be otherwise?
You know what? You know, when you win the lottery, there's not always money involved.
Excellent.
I won.
Great. Good for you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so we have on Zoom, we have John Bigelow. John, did you want to say something in the public section?
It will come back.
Nothing special, just thank you to people who volunteer so much time for this town to run.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Judy, Judy, I did have...
Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
Kevin, on Zoom, do you wanna contribute to a public comment?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. And Rich, I'm sorry I skipped over you.
So I had, I had two things. I think the board has received a note from my wife Lynn about license plates in the town beach.
Yep.
I would certainly second that. Was there a plan to read any of the feedback you've received into the, in this meeting from other people in the public?
I think if you wait till we get to that, you'll have an answer.
Perfect. Thank you. The other question is, that I have is, I've just lost track, Sean, I'm gonna talk about you, so I didn't get a chance to ask you. What is, I'll address Judy, what is the, the status of the police force? There had been, I'd heard discussion that maybe Sean would be retiring and all, and I just, I haven't kept up. It's my fault.
That's not your fault. Things are in flux. Okay, we'll make it to that later. If not, I would think we would probably be getting to that next, at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And do we get anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Then I think what we've all been waiting for. Michael Whitman, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you for making an appointment and letting us know your thoughts ahead of time. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I do wanna thank the select board for their promptness in minutes and agendas, like, really helps. Thank you for that effort.
Yep. We do our best.
The first item I had was about the rec committee bringing their minutes up to eight, and so my residents can learn how the decisions are made. And this isn't a frivolous question. I think the rec committee has a substantial budget, and the last town meeting we voted, I think it was, I think it was the last town meeting, fifteen thousand for lifeguards, but none were hired. So that's the first item.
Okay, do you want me to respond as you go?
Sure.
I can't speak to the older minutes, but I think lately you have seen a number of more recent minutes posted, and we will certainly do our best to some, no, not posted. They're there somewhere.
Okay. I don't see them.
And we do our best. Sometimes there isn't much to report, other than we've had some discussions without decisions, but as to the fifty thousand dollars for the lifeguards, both last year and this year, we did advertise for lifeguards. I don't know if you've seen or heard on the news, but lifeguards are in short supply countrywide and in this area as well, so we were unable, we got one response to three or four different advertisements, and that person was available for four weeks for limited hours during each day, and we can't really just have one lifeguard. We need at least a couple to be able to be together or to split shifts, and it was our full intention to fulfill that, but we were not able to hire them. If they're not there, you can't hire them, so, um, and if you wish, Dina can tell you exactly what those dates were, but I do know I saw one or two of the ads myself. I know they were on this survey. There was also a job posting, and, you know, if they aren't there, they aren't there. We can't image them.
The, and I think the town website needs to change because it has, it still says lifeguards are on duty from mid-June to mid-August.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to ask you, where does that say that?
Under, under rec, so.
Okay, I'll look and see.
I'll find it exactly.
I knew it had it under the job advertisement, because that's what their hours would be, but...
No, it's described in Chase Beach.
Okay.
We have not, we did the first year of COVID, there were, we closed the beach, period. And then gradually, our plan was to reopen depending on the status of the pandemic, and as I say, this year in particular, there was quite a bit of effort put into trying to find some, we just were not able to.
On the, on the minutes for the rec committee.
Hey Judy, sorry to interrupt, but I think Deb wanted to respond to that one piece right here before Michael moved forward.
Okay.
I just had a question about the rate that was offered for lifeguards, because in the past, Lime has not offered a competitive rate, so there's no way that we could get anybody.
I think they did this year, but I don't know.
Ten to fifteen dollars it was advertised as, anywhere in there, depending on experience or whatever.
And do you know what Hanover, for instance, was paying lifeguards?
Well, I did, I did have a couple conversations with Stores Pond via email, and with Missy also, and the Upper Valley Aquatic Center, and the CCB, and they all pay anywhere from twelve to seventeen, depending on experience. So some of them, much more experienced ones, could even get more than seventeen, so, you know, it's a good wage.
Is there a reason not to advertise at twelve to seventeen rather than ten to fifteen?
Well, ten, ten to fifteen was just voted on, and it wasn't, I didn't, in the ad, I didn't put the hourly wage. They could call me and get a job description, and then they could see that, but...
I don't believe the wage was stopping anyone from...
No, it isn't actually, and I want you to know, I think it's important to know, that in my conversations with Stores Pond, with the Upper Valley Aquatic Center, with the CCB, there was another one I can't think of what it is now, though. I asked them if they had extra guards that we could hire for more hours that kids might want, and they asked their guards. They had not enough for a full staff themselves, and they were actually closing their pools certain days because they didn't have guards enough. So there wasn't even any for us to borrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Michael?
My second item was about license plate checking at Chase Beach for cars not displaying a red Lime resident sticker, and, I had several comments that echo my feeling that that kind of surveillance bothers a lot of people. People, and these were some that I got. I'm a hundred percent behind raising these issues. Well, lifeguards, how about title liability? And does someone pay to monitor cars accessing the beach? Seems like those priorities might be scrambled. Someone else said it does not feel good that the town is recording license plates of cars going to the beach. A third one, on the license plate issue, it seems unnecessary to collect this information. And the last one was what has been done with the license plate info that's been collected?
Okay, and to answer Rich Brown's earlier mentioning, his wife did send an email with very similar comments to what you just said. In fact, I could have sworn it was the same person. So...
No, this was a different person.
Okay. I'm gonna turn over the license plate issue to Sean. He can tell you legality, what happens with them. But first I will say that we have had, over the last specifically three years, lots and lots of issues of hugely overcrowding, people coming from further afield than just Lime, or Orford, or Bedford, Hanover. It's been an issue, and it would be, has been unfortunate at times when there wasn't some sort of monitoring, when some residents weren't able to find a place to park their car and use the beach because everybody else was there, and they weren't always Lime residents. But Sean will address the taking of places put on.
It's just easier if I sit up here, so you don't have to turn around. So I want everyone to know that license plate monitoring has been going on at Post Pond for years, and in the past, it's always been done by the police. We check cars that don't have stickers. We have checked some cars that do have stickers, because I found stickers on cars of people who don't live here. And that has been our way over the years to determine who is eligible and supposed to be at the town of Lime's non-public facility, and who can't be there. License plates are not private in any sense of the word. That's why the state gives you two of them to put on the front and the back of your vehicle. The information contained in a license plate is what's private. Nobody can see that information by looking at your license plate. License plates get called in thousands of times a day across this state for numerous reasons. Crashes, reckless driving, vehicles parked along the sides of the roads, and all kinds of other things that people think are either suspicious. And every time that information is passed on to a dispatch center or a police station that has their own dispatching, no information is ever released to the individual that calls that plate in or says, hey, I just saw this license, I just saw this car, you know, we are bound, and I don't have my, so, state of New Hampshire and any law enforcement agency across the country is bound by the SEJIS requirement, which is the Criminal Justice Information Services, that we cannot disseminate any of that information to anyone except a fellow law enforcement officer. So, Michael, or anyone else in here, if you called me and said, hey, I just saw this car, you know, I'd like you to tell me who it was parked at the bottom of my driveway, I'm not gonna tell you that, because I can't, because I could get in trouble. So, I mean, I think one of the things that needs to be understood and people can rest assured is that no one's information goes further than the pieces of paper that come to my email after the monitors have left, or when they send, at the end of their shift, they send it in. I look at those sheets every week, and I look to see whose license plates are consecutive, especially those who don't stop, especially those who don't have stickers on their cars. Because in normal times, those are indicators that those are people that shouldn't be there. Now, I personally think it's just rude that people are driving by town employees when they've been asked to do a job. You know, they're doing nothing that hasn't been done in the past. In fact, they're doing less than has, what has been done in the past, because in the past, the police officers have driven through the parking lot, and with our little computer in the car, I can look at every license plate there and look and see immediately whose car it is. They don't have that ability. They're writing down somebody's license plate number. I think it's a pretty minor thing to, you know, just keep our investment safe as Lime residents. Over the years, we've had destruction of property. The building has been painted numerous times. Fences have been run over. Gates have been torn off. You know, the cook shack has been destroyed. We've had, the tennis courts have been destroyed, nets several times. Basketball courts, I mean, we had somebody who, there, but when we were, had the, when they were redoing the tennis courts, not last year, but the year before, whenever it was, five different occasions, people used a vehicle to pull the chains and break the locks so that they could play tennis on a tennis court that was closed for repairs, so that the people of this town could enjoy a nice, level tennis court. Do we know if those were out-of-towners or Lime residents? Have no idea. I would certainly like to think that they were not Lime people. But those are the kinds of things that cost the town money. You know, just Monday morning, I went down there at six-thirty, and the parking lot was all tore up. You know, whether that happened Sunday night, you know, into Monday morning, I don't know, but it wasn't there Saturday. So, you know, that's another thing that the highway guys are gonna have to go fix. Just last night, coincidentally, we now don't have monitors, and Sergeant Elliott went down and did his thing and had to ask somebody from, not from Lime to leave. You know, so it's... It's a problem, and it always has been. And we have tickets and those kinds of things that we issue and do issue at times. I have found that one of the most effective ways to get people to not come back if they don't belong here is to go to where they are and ask them to leave, so everybody can see it. Because as a town resident, if you're sitting there and there's people there, that you don't know, and I think it's pretty safe to say that a lot of us know a lot of people in this town. But if you see somebody getting asked to leave, that's sort of, kinda hits home that these people, you know, hopefully they're embarrassed and...
And that's what the police have done?
Absolutely. You know, they're embarrassed, they leave, they apologize. Most of them apologize, some of them don't. In fact, they're quite angry, but we have two signs down there that say Lime Residence Home, and they point out the, what you can do, what you can't do. No dogs, no alcohol, you know, no bad behavior, all that. And we've had to address all of those issues. And we've had to address all of those issues, even with people from our own town. You know, if nobody's looking, it's okay to do it. Well, that's not really, that's when your own integrity is tested, is when no one's looking. And if the signs and the rules are no boats, kayaks, alcohol, those kinds of things, then don't do it. But it happens all the time. And we get the, "Well, what do you mean? We live here, this is our beach." You're right, but there are rules. So, does that answer the piece about... Are there any questions? Let me ask that before we get...
Well, it does answer the piece about what's done with the information and the answer is nothing.
Well, no, then. The answer is that the information is used by Sean and the Lime Police Department to enforce the ordinances and rules that apply to the beach and other Lime public property.
Okay. Is there any follow-up?
No, Sean.
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Hold on, Jan.
You follow up if someone is there, if there's someone to talk to? Do you follow up if, if the license plate data shows that people are there who aren't residents? Do you follow up with them?
Absolutely.
By email?
Usually a letter. Yep, it just says, "Hey, you know, your vehicle was noted in our, from our beach monitor and I've determined that you are body Lime resident." And, you know, I mean, I am, you know, and one of the other things that I will tell you is that the beach monitors have been extremely, not only diligent but accurate. Not only are they asking people for their license plates and those kinds of things and who they are, but when somebody arrives that either has an out-of-state plate or they don't know, I mean, they've been very good about saying, you know, "Who are you here with?" "Oh, I'm here with the Whitmans or the Dividos," or, you know, I mean, and they write those things right on the form. So, I can see that the minute I, you know... And, you know, we have people here that are here for the summer and people that are house-sitting or petsitting for long periods of time. And, you know, the process is to go and see Patty and Katie and Sharon and they give you a temporary pass or however they manage that is their part. I don't, you know, as long as we see the sticker or the monitors see the sticker, then we can assume that they've been here and done the correct process through Patty and that's that, you know. If I note that their sticker says that it expired in July and they're still here in October, then I might call them up and say, "Hey, are you still here? Did you extend your stay?" Or, you know, are we just trying to sneak another swim in? So.
From the time, speaking of, over the years that you've been monitoring license plate numbers, do you note peak customers?
Not so much over the last four, five years, but prior to that, the first fifteen years I was here? Absolutely. And I think, you know, at least over the last five years, people have realized... Well, and actually, you know, so about five years ago, we went to a town ordinance ticket. So, anyone who is not there or who is there when they're not supposed to be can be issued a ticket above $200. First offense is $30. It doesn't take more than usually one ticket for somebody to say, "Oh, I guess the Town of Lime does not want me at their beach if I'm from Plainfield or April." So, at least since we've had the tickets, the repeatedness has slowed a lot.
Do we have a count of Lime resident users this year? I have no idea how big a problem this is.
Oh, well, I guess I'd have to thoroughly go through all of the sheets. I mean, one of the things that doesn't get documented by the monitors is those vehicles that actually pull into the road and then when they see the monitor, they end up leaving. Or they realize that, you know, I mean, many days and especially many of those days that were really, really hot. I know I sat down there and sat out by the end of the road and vehicles would come in with a lot of green plates and instead of going to the beach or starting to turn to the beach, they would then go to the boat landing. So, it's that little kind of deterrent that keeps people from not going in there. Now, you know, one of the other problems that we've had in the past is people parking at the boat landing and walking along the shore or swimming directly over to the beach. The monitors do, you know, they got their own thing to do. They're not down there watching that kinda stuff. You know, one of the things that most of them are not always that sharp about is that if they take the alternate route to get to the beach, then they walk back out through the parking lot and go by the monitor or, you know, so... But it has been, it has been a challenge for many, many years.
From this year's sheets, could we find out how many people, how many people these monitors talked to because they didn't have Lime resident stickers?
Could probably do that, yep.
Okay. Get an idea of how much more problem this is, is it worth paying the monitor and Sarah?
And, Michael, I would just say that this year, from my observations, and I'm down there quite frequently, there are fewer people total down at both the boat landing and the beach. Tennis courts are still pretty busy because of pickleball. It's great, I like that. But, so, my take on it is their constant presence over several years has gotten, for instance, the Dartmouth community used to come in droves and usually late afternoon, maybe after class.
Lost students?
Last two years, they would end up in the boat landing, partying out off in the waters. That was their thing. But they used to go and I heard them talking, "Well, you know, the underground whatever says, this is a great place to come in the evening and you could have picnics and you could do this and when we had the float, you could jump off the float and da-da-da." So, I think even if this year's numbers don't seem to you to be as critical as you think they might be, it might be because we've had this constant presence and they're finally learning that you don't go up to Lime to have your parties. And maybe some of the Vermont folks also have got that message. Plus, I think that Treasure Island is open this year where it wasn't the last two years. You know, a number of things have changed. But if Sean feels he or Cam have the time to be able to look at those numbers and get back to you, then that's fine.
Would it be helpful, and last question, have we investigated surveillance cameras?
The, I think it was the Rec Commission was talking about gates, automatic gates, key fobs, surveillance cameras, a number of alternative things, which all, by the way, are way more costly than our school monitors. But yes, we have talked about them, I suspect that we will be discussing them again.
It must not be easy for us monitors, I might get some...
They get a little bit of lip, but I think that they have a nice demeanor. Sean probably has a better answer to that than I do.
The two monitors that we had this year were fabulous and, you know, little different personalities than in years past. Young kids and the, I mean, when they come to the police car every time we show up, ask us our name, ask us if we live there, and ask us what our business is. They're pretty thorough.
That's right.
And they're great about it, you know.
Well, the other thing is they're not...
Oh, it's...
They are taught to not challenge people either. They just listen and if somebody's being grumpy, they are, and they just send them on their way, you know.
Would it be helpful for them to have a little handout explaining?
Well, they did have a handout at the beginning of the year of rules and things like that, but I don't, you know, I don't, they must have run out and...
Because people would say, "Well, we don't want this to seem like a gated community and we want it to be friendly and open." But a helpful explanation might help others understand.
One of the things I was gonna add when you were talking about surveillance and those kinds of things is that, you know, aside from the issues that happen during beach hours, you know, that parking lot is very busy when it gets dark. I can't even tell you how many arrests have been made in the parking lot on the beach, you know, for everything from DUIs to drug use, you know. And that leads us to another place, you know. If somebody's down there using intravenous drugs and leaves a needle on the ground or something and a child steps on it, that child's now gonna have to be subjected to shots for HIV, hepatitis B, C, and medications for those.
Yes.
And trust me, it's not fun because I just went through it earlier this year because I got poked by a needle. So, I think those are things that, gates and cameras, you know, somebody gets poked by a needle right now, the likelihood of us ever finding out who it is is undeniable. But if there was a surveillance system down there and it happened, you're gonna know the timeframe, we're gonna be able to go back and look at every vehicle that came in the parking lot. You know, I mean, the parking garage in Hanover is camered everywhere. The Town of Hanover is camera everywhere, just so you know. I could sit in dispatch and watch Jan Williams walk down Main Street.
I never walk down Main Street.
If I so chose.
I hope you have better things to do.
The world of cameras and the way things are done in the current world, you know, most people have no idea. The cameras on my truck actually record. So, I can go back and look and see who smashed into my car, see who I passed ten minutes ago if I was really that interested in spending all kinds of money to have those things activated. But, I mean, people have phones everywhere, you know. So, lots of things have taken place at Post Pond and at, in the parking lot and, you know, all those, all those things. Some of them have not been nice. We've had some really, really bad interactions down there. But things have gotten much better over the years. It seems as though we've gotten to a point of, I don't know if I'd use the word containment, but, you know, that, I think people are starting to figure out that the Lime residents feel that their little piece of a really nice beach and a really nice place to go to is really theirs. And I think, I think people are catching on to that. You know, one of the things that I tell people is that, my sister grew up here, she lived here, she lives in Hanover now. She called me one day a couple of years ago and said, "Hey, you know, could I bring the kids up to the pond?" And I was like, "Sure, how about this afternoon when I get off duty? You know, we'll go up." And she was like, "What, I can't go now?" And I'm like, "No, can't do that." You know, and she was like, "Oh, all right, well, no problem." I mean, not a big deal to her, but, you know, she didn't know. So, yeah. I know there are a couple of other questions, Evie and Deb.
Yeah, I know too, but I wanna make sure Michael is finished and then we'll leave Evie and then to Jan.
Yeah, I think that's it for now, thank you.
We've answered your questions at least service-wise. Okay, thank you. Evie?
I think the destruction is terrible and I know, I understand that whole need. I think that there's a real difference, though, between having the monitor write down license plates versus having the cop, the policeman in town be responsible for that piece, that if the monitor was just noticing resident stickers, you know, that's a very, I completely understand that. And I think giving tickets, you know, contacting Sean or whoever's on, to come down and say, you know, "We got a bunch of people who are out of compliance" and to give them tickets as you can for the town ordinance, that's great. That, I'm very comfortable with that. It's having teenagers write down a bunch of license plates. You know, it just seems like citizens shouldn't be doing that to each other, even if they're in the role of a town monitor. I mean, it's a very, it's like, I, it just makes me feel uncomfortable to have a long list of license plates that, you know, could go someplace, you know, and potentially could be misused. I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying there's a potential there. And it just, it's that police, police state feeling about the whole thing that just, I think, is rankling a bunch of people that they're very comfortable with checking the resident sticker and, you know, giving tickets, that's all very comfortable. And nobody wants that destruction on after-hours stuff. But there's nothing about the monitors writing down license plates that's gonna help with that whole piece. And so...
Oh, yeah, it will.
The after-hours destruction?
Well, no, not the after-hours destruction, but, you know...
And the last thing I wanted to say was that it would be super if we could take the resources that were not used for lifeguards perhaps, to really beef up the funding and run a pond program. Because I think that there's a real, you know, there's a whole generation of Lime kids who aren't gonna appreciate Post Pond in the way that my kids obviously do because they spend...
We are so with you, Evie, on that. And we also, for the last couple of years, have advertised for someone to run the pond program.
Reach out to other people that we knew.
Yeah, so...
I mean, lots, give them lots of money.
Sometimes money isn't the answer.
No, no.
But thank you for that suggestion, we're trying on that one too.
And swimming lessons is really, really important to the membership.
Yeah, I mean, I just, the kids who spend time at Post Pond are gonna appreciate it as a resource so much more.
Absolutely. Jan, did you want to say...
I think my question was answered without asking us, thank you.
Okay, Deb, did you have a further comment?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering, it sounds like the monitor is asking the people their names because that makes it easier for you to track the license? Or why are they doing that as well as writing the license down?
I think just to track who's there, I mean, if somebody comes in with a license plate and says, "I'm with so-and-so or I'm meeting so-and-so here," then if that, I mean, it's much easier to look back and say, "Oh, I saw Deb Robinson come in because she told me she was here." And she now has a guest that came forty-five minutes later. It's, I can see that. Or, you know, there's a license plate that corresponds with you in that you're at the Lime residence. I mean...
I just, I would just comment that, to me, that feels a little more invasive. Like, if you wanna take my license plate, that's fine. And if I know I'm having a guest, I can say, "I'm expecting this person, this is who I am, this is gonna be my guest." But to ask that every time seems a little bit more invasive to me.
So, one of the other things, oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, so, if they don't ask our names, then that means I'm gonna run seventy license plates on a daily basis to see who's lawfully there and who's not.
Yeah, so that's what I was asking, if you have that name, that's something that saves you time.
To do that is extremely time-consuming and...
You don't have a cell number?
Not really necessary if you just... Not really necessary if you just say, I'm Deb Robinson.
If somebody has a sticker, why write down that name first?
That's what I was just about to say. So one of the things that this commission talked about was maybe annually having people get a sticker and on the sticker would be their license plate number. So that the sticker number and the car license plate get tied together and then you wouldn't need necessarily to ask for names unless it's someone visiting. But again, then what you're doing is asking everybody, my sticker has been on my car for a number of years. And I get a different car and I carefully peel it off and I put it on a new car. So you would have everybody who wanted to use the town facilities coming in every year to get a new sticker or every couple of years if they changed a car or changed a plate. And I think at the time we thought, well, that's a great idea, but people will probably resist that because it's just another exercise in, now I have to go to the town office again to get my sticker. And it didn't seem, at least to us at the time, like a good idea to put out there. But that could solve that problem with, you know, asking a person's name and you will put a sticker and it's got the license number on it and it matches the car. Because we also know the stickers are mobile and they go here, I can give mine to Sean so his sister can go down with a sticker on the car. That happens.
I actually believe that over the last couple of years Patty and Katie and Sharon have been writing your license plate on the sticker, whereas before that they weren't. So there are lots of us out there and I actually just got one, I just got a new one not long ago because mine didn't have my license plate on it. So what they've been doing is writing the license plate to whatever car right on it, which, you know, I suppose if we got to a point where most of us in town had that written on there, yeah, you could pull up and not only do you have your sticker right there, but your license plate's right on there, they write that down and away you go. I mean, that's.
That seems a good idea, we're not expiring to the side of the car.
That's a fairly simple solution to, you know, Deb's worried.
Thank you. Sean, first off, thank you for the eye-opener on what happens up at the town beach. I was clueless about a lot of that stuff, so that changes some of the way I think about this. I mean, specifically after-hours destruction and stuff like that. What, what's up with that? Second, what should we do about it? This is, this is the beginning of a longer discussion, you're getting people coming in and saying, I feel really uncomfortable about collecting the license plates, I can't, but, you know, if we did go to a surveillance camera, well, that's a whole different kettle of fish, I was, I will go there, that's a whole different kettle of fish. One of the questions that maybe would help people feel better in town is what's the policy on the record retention? What happens to these license plates if, you know, a couple of weeks go by and you don't see any repeat offenders? If you shredded a piece of paper, that might make people feel better. I don't, I'm not sure what is gonna make people in town happy, but there's different thoughts. Obviously, if there's a camera there that can see all the license plates of people tearing up the parking lot, there's a whole nother question about how long do those tapes stay around? And this is something that the town is gonna have to come to terms with. I have no qualms about you checking a few license plates and saying, wait, they're from Massachusetts and, you know, they've come three times this week, give them a ticket. I mean, that's, that's totally proper. It's a broader governmental issue, how long do they keep these records on us private people? And so that's, that's a discussion, we need to work through it. And so I appreciate all this time, I'm gonna stop.
Yeah, so, I mean, the town would, you know, have to talk to council about a policy.
Yeah, right.
You know, especially, you know, you put up a surveillance system that is constantly recording, you know? Not only do we have to have a policy and figure out where that information will be stored, but the town of Lime is responsible for notifying people as soon as they come on the property that they're being surveyed, that they're being surveilled, you know?
So, I mean, there's a bigger discussion there, you don't have to solve it now.
No, 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 I was just gonna add that, you know,
We're not going to.
Technically, the way things are in this point in time, you know, anybody who has a surveillance camera at their home that's pointed outside, you should be telling people they're being recorded when they walk on your property.
Interesting.
You know, I mean, this is where we're at, it's crazy stuff, especially if it's facing outside. If it's facing inside, well, that's your domicile, you have.
Do they do that in Hanover, is there any?
What's that?
Do they, do they notify people they're being recorded in Hanover?
The parking garage does. The big camera that is on the tower is not, it's not, normally it's pointed right at the intersection of Main Street and Wheelock. Other than that, if they can look to see other places from inside dispatch.
This is on Baker Tower?
Yep.
And actually.
There probably is a, there's probably something in the town of Hanover's policies, ordinances, I don't know, on their website. You know, I mean, I think that because that tower's on Dartmouth College property, Dartmouth College doesn't have to tell anyone anything because they're a private entity.
So.
That would be my guess, I don't know.
Thank you, Sean. So David, did you wanna make any further comments? Hey, Ben, I know you're there and been listening patiently, did you have anything to add to this conversation?
Well, it just seemed you're going from a relatively simple solution of monitors, license plates, you know, the town has license plates of everybody's car as a matter of fact they were at the beach, so I don't see why there's such concern about that. And certainly any other added level of surveillance is gonna create more concern among saying people are worried about monitors.
Okay, thank you, Ben. I think, okay, we've got a new.
I'm sorry, it's.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, my interactions as a resident, going down there with these monitors has been very positive. They're friendly, they're kind, I don't know, I guess I feel like I know them now, but, you know, I, you know, to say I don't have a problem with it, it goes without saying, it, they've been great. So just trying to add a little bit of positive to the individuals who have, who have been doing this. I have not ever felt like I've been under surveillance.
Excellent, well, thank you for that, and I think with that, if it's okay with everybody, I think we can wrap this up. Really appreciate Michael Whitman making an appointment to come in and share, and the rest of you to come in and join in that conversation, and Sean especially for helping us with a deeper understanding. I'm sure we will have more discussions as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And we're working on those minutes, Michael is really tough, but if we can keep them up to date from where we are now and go forward, I hope that will solve most of the problems.
Do the minutes not exist from the recommending?
As some of the older ones seem not to exist. The individuals tasked with writing them seem to have either lost them in draft form or never submitted them.
They don't exist?
So, but the recent ones, we have located and put, I believe, put on the website.
Well, I also wanna say that I think the biggest missing one is the year of COVID, so we didn't meet very much that year, so.
But I could be too.
The other ones you should see, and we don't always meet every month either, so, you know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Michael, nobody ever wants to be the secretary of any committee.
No, that's true.
That's a lousy job, mostly. That's a lousy job, mostly.
We all have that role of.
That's right.
Appreciate you.
Understand. If they, if they can't, if the person asks what it can't do, it's, it's someone else.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have the minutes, the select board minutes of August fourth. In draft, there were some draft changes presented by David. I looked at those, they seem to be fine with me. Ben, have you had a chance to look over the draft minutes as suggested changes made?
Congratulations, grandpa.
Yes, I'll, I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. David, always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. So they are approved. Yes. Okay, thank you. Now, we have two sets of manifests which I believe were emailed to you folks. One set in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars and seven hundred and thirty-seven and eighteen cents. And the other set in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. What, do, do either of you have any, um, questions or?
Sorry, I didn't print that out, but I see that you're here.
They're there.
One question, uh, one thing on the longer set.
Okay, these are the eight five set.
Oh, innovative surface solutions? What is that?
Magnesium for the road.
Oh, so the innovative surface solution is salt.
They, they, they're not salt. It's the stuff they spray on the road.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, it's not salt.
No, it's not salt.
I think that was the only one where I looked at the name and then now.
So, what do we wish to do with the, um, manifest from August fifth?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, David and Ben, all those in favor, say aye.
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. Those are approved in the manifest from eight fifteen.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
David, thank you, Ben. Any further discussion on those? Those are the big ones. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. Thank you. Those both are approved.
I just wanna note how insignificant the town is with that five hundred thousand dollars going to the school.
You always like to point that out.
We gotta get rid of that school, honey. It's very expensive.
Well, budget season's coming up.
It's the reason why a lot of people are here.
Yes, yes, indeed. Okay, we have an intent to cut for forty Preston Road. And, um, Ben, you're not here, so I don't know if you've been in to have a look at this. This is.
I, I did look at it, it looks fine.
Okay. And it is, uh, Charles Devoe is the person who did make the cutting. Thank you. And what do we wish to do with this intent to cut?
I think we should sign it, I'll move it.
Uh, and I'll second it. Okay. And all those in favor?
David, aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, so that's approved.
Wow, this is kinda shed.
That, I think they had on site.
I was gonna say, I think Charlie had it in his truck for a while.
Next, we have a demerger. Okay, you have the actual signing thing. We have a request, we have a memo from David Robbins. We've had a request to demerge Y seventeen on Tax Map two oh one and ninety-eight on Tax Map four oh nine. The memo from David Robbins states that he's reviewed both property files, was unable to locate any documentation showing that current or past owners had voluntarily merged the two lots. And in the memo, he describes the efforts he went to, to look back in the files, move forward. And based on what he saw there, he believes the town actually merged the lots and that they may lawfully be demerged under RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine.
Just from my dummy, so I understand, we have two separate legal laws. The town at some point merged them together and has been treating them and taxing them as a single law.
Correct.
But there was never, that we could determine that a request from the property owner do that and so, and the property owner wants them to be treated as separate.
In the old days, oftentimes towns would actually say, you know, you own this piece and this piece and they're right next to each other, we're gonna call that one lot. As, as time has gone by, and sometimes that benefited the property owner, sometimes it benefited the town, it was just easier to assess one lot than two. Nowadays, if you have two lawful lots, maybe they aren't currently approved under zoning, but they, they should be able to stand alone, you should be able to use them. Your, your actual taxes might go up because of that, but you have a right under the law to separate those back out. And the reason you look back is to make sure at some point in history, some owner didn't say, oh, I think I'm gonna merge these. Then you don't have a right to claim two lots.
Or you'd have to go in and get a subdivision, right?
Exactly. And, and you'd have to meet all the requirements, which sometimes you can't. So in this case, and he has, if anyone wanted to see it, I mean, it's a law, he did want a number of investigations back on both lots and he could not find any history where the property owner came in.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, was there any indication on the, the request from the property owner as to the reason for?
They don't need to give a reason why they want to unmerge, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Demerge them.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I can't answer that directly, but I know that they are not required to.
Just a curiosity, where are they located?
It's the end of Market Street on both, on one side of Washford Hill Road.
Okay, thank you.
And the other one goes and then hits, um, Dorchester Road about where Franklin Hill Road is.
Michael?
Just a quick question. On tax maps, I looked at something like, I think it's the twenty nineteen tax maps on the town website. Are those tax maps done every year?
I think they are done every year, but I am not, um, some, I know that some years we don't do them, but we like to keep them up to date. Because if, if we had a year with no changes made, we wouldn't have to. But usually, there's some kind of a change made, so.
Is that David Robbins area?
Who's what?
Is that David Robbins area of responsibility?
I don't know who's responsible for that. He certainly would know where there would be changes. And we also get, uh, yeah, because if it's a subdivision or a merger, it should go through the planning board.
I'll ask you. Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
So, Ben and David, what do we wish to do with this demerger of lots?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay. And all those in favor of the demerger, say aye.
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
Judy, aye. So that's approved. Okay, so. I am taking a moment here to sign my very short name on this. And we'll wing it down the table to David for his signature.
Is that from Flower and House?
Yes.
I used to live right across the street from there.
Oh, no kidding? We had, we had really good friends who lived there, would come to visit and bring us those delicious pastries. Thank you very much. All right, let's see. Lime Academy Center, the Lime Center Academy building, we have a request from Utility Club to, pardon me, um, use the Lime Center Academy building for their monthly meetings. They need no equipment, they are there monthly, they discuss current topics. From mine, there's, uh, no fee for the participation, they're gonna use it under the auspices of CCL and their insurance. So, October, November, and January is on this request for permission. I'm gonna move it. I think it's wonderful to have that building used and this is a very soft type of use. Thank you, Ben. Okay?
Yeah, the only thing, yes, I am, sorry. The only thing I'm still checking on is the insurance.
Okay. Well, pending the insurance.
Right.
I've moved it, Ben's seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
David, aye.
Perfect.
Ben, aye.
Judy, aye. Okay, so that's approved unless you tell us that the insurance isn't gonna cover it. Okay. And next, we have a report from DOT, Department of Transportation, reporting on the Lime Highway Block Grant aid. The total for FY two thousand twenty-three is, one, two, three, four payments starting in July of twenty-two and estimating through April of twenty-three. A total of ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. It's just an update, a report of what we got.
Right.
From DOT for our block grant, which we gleefully use every year.
And just note, our block grant total ends up being a little different than that because we go January to December.
Right, and that one goes from July to next April.
Yeah. And the other bit of good news I can add right in here is, um, Senate Bill four oh one passed. And in doing that, uh, we have an additional eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents that we just received from the state of New Hampshire for, uh, additional block grant money.
Okay, eighty-two thousand, how much?
Five hundred and thirty-four and eighty-eight cents.
That'll just about cover our overage on, uh, recent egg encryptions.
Maybe, that's right.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, it was distributed, it was thirty million dollars, that was a one-time payment and it was distributed through all New Hampshire municipalities based on road mileage.
Great. Do you need this, um, DOT thing back? Okay. Thank you for that.
That was a nice surprise.
That was a nice surprise. Now, I'm, I'm gonna just give everyone, uh, uh, another update and then we're probably going to go into non-public session for a discussion under legal for settlement discussion. The State of New Hampshire Board of Tax and Land Appeals has issued a hearing notice to the town of Lime. This is a Northern New England telephone operations versus the town of Lime. The date and time of this hearing is Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at nine AM in Concord. The board has allocated four hours for this hearing, two hours for each side if necessary. However, we believe that we may be able to settle this out of court. And that settlement discussion is what we will be taking up next in non-public session.
Why is it non, why is it non-public? I'm just asking.
Um, lawsuits and settlements discussions with attorneys are always non-public.
Do, would we, um, I'm just curious about the facts of the case.
Well.
We don't know the facts, they're right.
They're gonna be in, things that we're gonna see in our non-public discussion. But this is another of those cases, I believe, last year at town meeting, we reported on a settlement similar to this for earlier years. So, um, this is sort of, I hope, possibly the end of this.
Well, I mean, once you get out of the dollar amounts and all that stuff, would, would a summary of the facts of the case be potentially available, Ben?
Possibly. I can't, I can't say, but we can certainly ask town council what, what we are able to share. And we know that there will be a report when it is resolved, but I don't know how much detail there will be.
Right.
There'll be a written, right, a written settlement like there was with the previous one. And after it's all agreed upon and signed, then it can be shared. I will tell you it has to do with the right of way.
Yeah.
So, it's an ongoing thing with.
It's either money or land, always, isn't it?
That's right.
Very good. And I thank you all for coming.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I am, yes, moving.